I'll go ahead and call the order this meeting in the Nelson County School Board on October 20th, 2015 at approximately 5:01 PM. We'll start out with pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The school board mission statement, Nelson County Board of Education, representatives of our citizens and entrusted with their children, pledges to support the mission of Nelson County School District by setting visionary direction to affect policy, oversight, and efficient resource management. The vision statement is quality education now, learning for life. Dr. Orr, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, sir, we've got it set up.
Okay. Item three on the agenda is student and stakeholder engagement, and the first one, 3A, is student performance.
So we have a young man from Old Kentucky Home here, but I think his principal, Mr. Simpson, is going to introduce him, so, Mr. Simpson.
Good evening, as Mr. Orr said, my name is Jesse Simpson, the principal of Old Kentucky Middle School, and I have the privilege this evening of introducing the young eighth grader from old KH, his name is Keegan Watts, and he is currently on our eighth grade band. He is proficient in multiple instruments, including the saxophone, tenor saxophone, and percussion. Recently, Keegan was offered a scholarship to Stephen Foster Music Camp where he spent a week performing with other students around the state. Keegan will move on to high school band next year where he will continue to perform with the concert band and marching band. He will soon be admitted into a leadership position with the high school marching band. This evening, Keegan will be performing Pacquiao Bill's Cannon arranged for tenor saxophone. This is a very recognizable tune that is often heard at weddings and other intimate events. With that, Keegan, take away the guitar.
Keegan, what's the best part of being involved in the band, both the middle school or the high school?
The best part of being in band is definitely meeting new people. When I go to competitions and festivals, I often run into people that I normally wouldn't meet, and it's introduced me to a lot of new people throughout the time I've been in the concert band and marching band.
So the scholarship from the Stephen Foster Music Association, the band where you got to go to Eastern?
Yes.
How long were you there?
I was there for five days, school week, and I got to meet a ton of new people, actually.
Where do you want to go to college?
Right now, I haven't quite made up my mind, but I'm definitely looking pretty much everywhere.
Good.
And I'm sure Mom says wherever we pay for it, right?
That would be fabulous.
So keep up with the music, possibly marching band in college?
Yes.
You get the ball gang's turn.
Very true.
Great work, Keegan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So you're moving on to item 3B, the good news, Dr. Orr?
And I think Keegan is going to handle that for us as well, if he doesn't mind coming up to the podium with the microphone. I think you've got a copy there.
Is it going to play music?
That one will be definitely.
This week, Old Kentucky Home Middle School rolled out a new intervention schedule that provides a blend of teacher and computer-based math and reading instruction every day for every student. This is just one example of how our schools are reaching every student where he or she needs help and enrichment most.
Do you have some more on there?
That's all it says for...oh.
Yeah, we'll...if you don't mind sharing the good news for the other schools. I appreciate the competitive, thank you.
The recent parent university at Bloomfield Elementary was a success. We had many parents and students that participated in various activities, learning about art, story bird, healthy snacks, parent portal, and Lexia and Dreambox for parents. Parents also visited the classrooms to view current student work. It was a great night. For Boston, Boston's seventh grader Evan Lawson was selected for a role in a web series called Coping. We are so proud of Evan as a TV production company is now looking at this series, and this opportunity for Evan has the potential to impact his acting career. Cox's Creek Elementary School celebrated its annual fall festival with huge parental and community turnout. We were excited to see most of our families in attendance and getting actively involved in our school. Horizon students in the landscaping project group have been working at New Haven School. The students and staff at New Haven have been very complimentary of their hard work. After the project at New Haven is completed, the group will travel to Bloomfield Middle to help create an outdoor classroom. Thomas Nelson High School was recently informed that of all the FFA programs in the state, students in the Thomas Nelson FFA program have the second highest scores in English II and writing. Thomas Nelson High School is celebrating continued success with student writing. Out of 228 high schools in the state, Thomas Nelson ranked 12th in writing and student writing on the KPREP bond demand test. The Early Learning Center has raised $2,900 for St. Jude with their Trika bond. Nelson County High School was recently informed that of all the FFA programs in the state, students in the Nelson County FFA program have the eighth highest scores in biology and the fourth highest scores in English II. This week, Old Kentucky Home Middle School rolled out a new intervention schedule that provides a blend of teacher and computer-based math and reading instruction every day for every student. This is just one example of how our schools are reaching every student where he or she needs help or enrichment most.
I think Principal Simpson is probably willing to make sure to start with okay and end with okay.
Thank you, Keegan, appreciate that very much.
Yeah, as I've looked at that monthly calendar, so are two high schools with all FFA programs in the state, number two and number four in English II on paper explosion.
Pretty impressive.
So that's out of probably, I would say probably not 228 FFA programs, but probably quite a few across the state. Item 3C, expect the best recognition.
So every month, we give recognition to folks in the district, a student, a classified staff member, a certified staff member, and a parent who go above and beyond in their support of students and their support of the work that the district does. And so we have several people that we want to recognize tonight, and what I'll do is read through the nominations that we received, and then we'll ask those of you who have been named to come up, and we have a plaque and a gift and a picture that we would like to take and get everybody together. So we appreciate everybody being here, but this is definitely more good news for the district when we have recognitions like this. And I'll start with our certified staff member. Ms. Michelle Gossar is at Horizons. She and the public relations group there created beautiful display boards that were used at the Hall of Fame celebration for the athletic program at Nelson County High School. Ms. Gossar and the students stayed after school to make sure that the boards were completed on time. Everybody at the celebration complimented the boards on how professional they looked, and they did look very nice. Our classified staff member is Mr. Alan Mason, who is an employee at Bloomfield Elementary School. He's a dedicated custodian who always wears a smile on his face, does anything that is asked of him, and keeps the building clean. He's quite the handy man as well. He's a devoted family man, is the father of two sons, and Bloomfield Elementary is very fortunate to have him working for their school. From Cox's Creek, we have two students who worked together in partnership. Alexis Newton and Jacob Solerzano have created a student-generated book club called Baxter's Bookworms. The club is open to fourth and fifth grade students who are interested in reading and discussing about 10 different books throughout the school year. These two youngsters developed their own criteria for students to join the program, and they included good academic standing in that criteria. And then from Boston, our parent is Tracy Holzclaw. Ms. Holzclaw is our PTA president, a tireless volunteer, and a coordinator of volunteers. She works with her team to help facilitate the annual Boston Oyster Supper. She and her husband Chuck are continuously seeking the school's needs and serving to fill them. So we want to say thank you to all of you for your extraordinary efforts in support of kids in schools, and so if you'll come forward, we'd like to make a presentation for you.
Thank you.
Okay, what we're going to do is we have two of us here, and we'll come over just a little bit more. A little bit more than mine.
Tilt your wares so the glare won't shine.
Your own each off.
That's what I do, okay?
It takes the glare off.
Yes, that's right.
If you can't see the camera, the camera can't see you. And then don't move so that Mom can get a good picture, too. I'll try to jump out of the way. Three, one, two, three. Well. Got how this thing works. Three, one, two, three, two, three. And they stay where you are so Mom can get her picture. Well, okay, moms are more important usually in these things. I'm sure she will, and that's what parents do, they're there to embarrass their kids.
Thank you very much.
An adult baby. Listen, I have the wrong side, so I will get that to this table. Did you want an adult baby? So you know what, I just messed up the name tag, so we're good. That's the medium, I think that'll work for you, this is an adult baby. If you need a different size, you just let me know. Okay, we'll take care of it.
For Alexis and Jacob and Moms and Dads and everybody else, you're free to stay, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but you know, if there's like a book that you need to be reading tonight to be ready for the next book club discussion, it's okay, we understand if you need to go on and step away. Appreciate you all being here and the work that you do there at Cox's Creek.
Congratulations to all of you.
Moving on to item four on the agenda, the operations consent agenda. This consists of the information, personnel actions, treasurer's report, bills and claims, units report, leaves of absence, minutes from previous meeting, overnight out-of-state trips, and fundraising requests. All these are items that we received as part of our board agenda towards the end of last week. Motion by Mr. Payne. Second by Ms. Breeding, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to item five, efficient resource management. 5A is the Pepsi contract. Looks like the contract is it.
Good evening. This, the item we have on the agenda for you tonight is about the forced rendition of our Pepsi agreement we've had. We entered into the original agreement with Pepsi in 2000, I believe. We have come back to the board about every four years or so, five years or so, and asked that you continue that agreement. This affords our schools an opportunity for consistent pricing. An agreement like this provides for, again, consistent pricing across the district and stable income for our schools and school groups through the sales of those soft drinks, et cetera. I will say that some of you may know this from prior conversations, others may not. This is not an item that's required to be bid, an item that we're reselling. Doesn't mean it's not a good idea to do that, but it's not required to be bid. In this particular market, Pepsi has been the only vendor that's expressed any interest at all in continuing a school agreement. They have offered similar pricing to what we've been seeing the last several years. I have worked directly with both high schools that generate most of the sales of these soft drinks, the vast majority, 90 percent, and worked with those folks throughout the process, and they support the recommendation I to continue with Pepsi. I'd be glad to answer any questions. I'll ask one of my own questions, just in case you don't think of it. Over the years, folks have said, "Well, I can go to Walmart and I can buy it for less than I can buy through this contract." And our response is, "Yeah, you can, but then you've got to go buy a refrigerator to put it in." Because all the coolers, when you go to a football game and you see all those coolers, they all belong to Pepsi. Pepsi maintains those. If they break, they replace them. And there's 20 to 30 of those in the district. There are other perks they deliver. We don't have to run out. We don't have to depend on parents or coaches or secretaries to run out. For our vending machines in our buildings, and there's a lot fewer of those than once was, many years ago, we went to self-service, or excuse me, full service. Pepsi stocks the machines, they take the money out, they mail the school a check. Years ago, folks in the schools did that, and this barrier was probably there when we were doing that. And so that, those are just some of the benefits, I think, consistent pricing, you know, the full service portion there, a piece of the agreement. It's been a successful arrangement, I think, with the schools and Pepsi since about 2000 and be glad to answer any questions anyone might have.
Have any questions over the counter? Like a motion from Mr. Payne? Second by Ms. Berry, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item 5B, which is the 2015-16 SFCC Technology Offers of Assistance.
Typically come to you a couple of times a year and ask that you match this particular, these offers on a dollar-for-dollar basis. This money, when you choose to approve the offer tonight, match it, we'll make a deposit from our general fund and our special revenue fund or our grant fund, and then a few weeks from now, we'll receive a check for an electronic transfer from the state for the $37,445. Mr. Jackie might know better than I what to expect in the form of a second offer, but generally speaking, it's about double that, and then you double it again when you add the district's match. Does that make sense? It fluctuates, but roughly $150,000 a year in CATS money, half of it being state revenue, and it boils down to average daily attendance. It's based on average daily attendance and the per pupil amount. We're going to receive, if the past holds true to this through this year, we'll like about $150,000 between two offers of assistance and our local match for technology expenses in addition to the money we spend out of the general fund.
I think Fisher will end up doing three offers. This one was based on $9 per average daily attendance. There'll be one in December, maybe the January meeting, that's $8 per ADA. And then, I can't remember which month we should expect the third offer, but it will be $7 per ADA. So it's $24 total over the course of the year, so you know, if we've got 4,500 ADAs...
4,200.
4,200 times $24, that's how much the offer from the state will be over the course of this fiscal year. We match it with light dollars, and then all of those funds are used towards technology type of expenditures.
And what would that look like?
Dollar-wise?
No, no, what would the expenditure look like?
Oh, it could be on in-user devices, it could be software, it might be break, fix, repair. There's a limited scope of the types of things it can be used on, but kind of the general rule of thumb is if it's technology, it can be used on.
Of course, again, we supplement that with general fund dollars every year.
Okay, so...
What is the in-user?
Oh, desktop laptop, in-users. You're an in-user. So make a motion. Motion by Mr. Payne. Second by Ms. Breeding, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to item six, professional growth and effectiveness system, effectiveness system. 6A, memorandum of agreement for teacher education program.
Members of the board, you have with you a memorandum of agreement for the following universities, Bellarmine, Campbellsville, Jefferson Community College, Morehead State, Midway College, and St. Catherine College. These are all agreements that we will take their student teachers by their regulations that they have for each university.
Any questions? That's it, is anyone?
That's all that wants to come? I mean, is that...
That's all that we've had sent to us. There may be additional ones in the future. These are ones that need immediate placement for those kinds of...
I'll make a motion. Motion by Mr. Payne. Second by Ms. Berry, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Just curious, so which one are you two from? I'm sorry?
My application should be coming very western, like U of U, but...
Okay. Well, so I would assume, though, that as those are received in our office, we'll have another one of these on a future meeting. That's fair, yeah. So a western, western? Both?
So we may have seen it at a prior meeting, that's a possibility.
And it's not that we're going to turn away anybody that wants to come and student teach in the best school district in the state, so...
I'll have their HR rep call up.
Take them out. Appreciate it. Item number seven, college and career readiness, 7A kindergarten readiness.
Okay, we're going to talk a little bit about kindergarten. The Brigance Assessment is assessment given to all incoming kindergarten. It is a state mandated assessment, and if you look at this first slide here, it's going to tell you just a little bit about what pertains in the actual assessment, but it looks at the physical, the social, emotional, and also looks at language development, literacy, math, and science, and daily living. There's also a piece that the parents fill out about their prior experiences if they attended a childcare facility or a public preschool. So it also looks at self-help skills as well. So right now, this is preliminary data, okay, but if you look at Bloomfield Elementary, the circle graph on your left is from 2014, and on your right is 2015, and like I said, it's raw data. The official data will come out in December. But if you'll look, that the dark blue is those ready, the orange is those ready with enrichment, so sort of like above average, and then the gray is more than not ready. So if you'll look there, you can see that we decreased in those not ready from one year to the next, and this is Bloomfield, and you can see the percentages there. I'll move on to Boston Elementary School. You can see the difference is there, and if you'll notice, the enrichment increased by 1% from 2014 to 2015. We see there, there's a little bit of change. Also, if you look at Cox's Creek, you'll see the difference is there, and also this can sort of show you the difference in culture from building to building of those maybe that have a higher percentage of students that attended a public preschool or childcare facility where they worked on beginning readiness skills, but you can see the difference is there for Cox's Creek. Once again, that has the highest percentage of all elementary schools that are ready for kindergarten. If you look at Foster Heights, they have the largest percentage ready with enrichments at 11% for this year. And then we'll follow up with New Haven here, and you can see the percentages. And I think the good news with this is as we see over time, more and more students are getting prepared for kindergarten through preschools, and they're having adequate childcare facilities that's preparing them for the real classroom setting, and I feel like also this data is very helpful to our own preschool to know what skills to target by looking at the screener. Ms. Walker will be able to apply those skills in the Early Learning Center and help students to become better prepared for kindergarten.
So just real quick, I'm trying to remember, is it statewide, the percentage that is ready on average is approximately 50%, somewhere around there?
Somewhere around there. I can tell you the exact...
Okay. Well, and the reason I was asking is, I mean, so we're not too far off from that, so we're kind of around that state average there. I just wanted to make sure that we're not skewed too far one way. It'd be better to be skewed the other way, but...
Yes, and you can see overall for Nelson County, we're there at 47%, and so we're sort of half and half of not ready and ready. So that's an area to work on and to focus on because you know kindergarten skills, you come in and it's not preschool, it's not... you come in and it's not preschool, it's not daycare anymore. We're already working on reading skills, basic reading skills and math. And so it's very important that they have that early learning opportunity so they're ready to go.
Have you done any analytics to see how many are coming from our preschool?
Yes, Ms. Walker is actually analyzing the data. This is her first year to do that, and she is even breaking it down as far as male and female and doing some comparison, but she's waiting for the 14, 15 data so she can do that, and I can bring that back to you in December.
I like that, that looks like.
Well, I think also regardless of what those numbers do look like, which would be interesting to see that, is this gives us more support for what it is that we're trying to do as a board and as a school district with the Early Learning Center, and that trying to provide opportunities for more students to attend there so we can help get them towards being kindergarten ready.
Strengthen programs over there, that would be the strengthen programs over there.
Sure, sure.
Yeah, because I'm not real happy with New Haven. I don't know how the rest of us feel, but what are we going to do? I mean, what is there in life to do?
Well, I think the big thing is to take this data out to the community, and we need to educate all childcare facilities, not just the early learning center. But I know there's probably personal childcare, but there's probably community advocates here in Barstown. I'm not familiar with those advocates right now, but if we share the data and share the screening and what they need to have, then we can educate those people so they can be better prepared in preparing those kids for kindergarten.
And by that, you're talking about like private enterprise daycare, whether it's a church or a, I'm going to just use a name that's common, we care daycare. Something that is possibly a, an early learning type center that's not school district ran.
Yes, and you also have your private childcare, you know, like my mother was a childcare for my children, and it was very important for me to take some of this information. I knew exactly what they were going to need in kindergarten and shared that with her. So I think the more we share that out to the community and even let those private childcare people know, they can work on those skills.
Have some of those reasons where they can, you know, work on some of those things in their own, you know, private home, isn't that a great idea?
And even in the summer, you know, there's lots of churches and different community organizations that offer different things. And I think if they have in hand what they need to learn, then they can apply those skills and help us be ready to go before we get to kindergarten.
It's just another example of why early learning is so critical. It is. I mean, that's been one of the big discussion points I know in a lot of political debates, whether or not it has value, whether it does have value. I mean, I think all of us that are in this room would vouch that it does have value, that early learning opportunity, that preschool. I know my son was in preschool for certain identifying needs that he had, and it was a complete 180 turnaround that we saw in a matter of just a year or so from him having that opportunity, so.
And it comes with maturity and socialization.
Exactly.
And that will develop leadership skills at the preschool level.
How about how many preschoolers do we have over in New Haven?
That's a pretty small number, and when I worked through those data, I think there were about 40 or 50 kids, I want to say, from New Haven included in that data. And that's not just the early learning center, but it's also not a complete inclusion of all the data that we'll ultimately have. That's why we've got to hold off. We just wanted to kind of give you a sense of where our kids were and what we're working with.
I recognize what, I saw that number as well, Ms. Berry, of New Haven. I mean, there's probably multiple things going on, one being it's such a small sample set out there at New Haven. I mean, we're probably talking about in the kindergarten class 30, 35 students, if that, which can be swung very heavily from year to year on any sort of test score, in this case, on kindergarten readiness. Doesn't mean that there's not things that need to happen, but there's probably several factors that are at work for why these numbers look the way they are.
And this data is very helpful to the kindergarten teachers this year, looking back on data from last year, they know where to go back and start with those beginning skills. So I guess it, it's a state mandated assessment, but it's a great instructional tool to let us know what we need to be doing and how we can be proactive and prepared.
The RWE piece, ready with enrichment? So what, just an example or two of what that enrichment kind of scenario might be?
For kindergarten, like I said, a lot of students come in and they can already read. They can put together sight words and they can sight word read. So that would be exposing them to some books, some early literature and reading with them and allowing them the opportunity to read. Because basically kindergarten curriculum, you start learning your sounds, you start learning the letters, and typically you learn a set, or you'll learn like A, B, C, D, E, and you'll study those words and how, and it's a while before you get to actually words where you have children that come in and know sight words. So why not expose them to the book? So teachers putting in front of them literature where they can read and go on and read with someone, pairing them up with an older student. Same is true with math, exposing them to solving problems. It's not that you have to put it in an algorithm where they actually have to see it, but they can, you know, they can recognize five, they can write five, so now why can't we make quantities of five? So it's just looking, a different way of the instruction.
So the RWE is actually more than ready for kindergarten?
Right.
Okay.
They've got your basic foundation, so they're ready to go.
Okay. I was misinterpreting that. I was interpreting that as being, they would be ready if these other opportunities were given to them. The RWE students are actually students that are not only already ready for kindergarten, but they're already a little bit further along.
They already are identifying their letters, their basic numbers, they can count for you maybe to 10 or to 20.
Let me get this in my mind, start saying, let me get this straight, but let me, let me just sort of talk my way through this. You're planning on to make this, to make the community more aware of what needs to be taught to our preschool kids. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. I don't have a problem with that, but I see, I hope it doesn't happen, but how are you going to persuade these people in these smaller settings like we have, let's say, one person has six kids, you know, are responsible for six little ones? Now, how are you going to talk her into saying, "You need to help us out and help us with math or reading or whatever"? Now, how do you plan on doing that? I mean, I'm sort of lost on this.
Well, I think all parents want their children to be successful. They all desire that, no matter how many children they have, and not, and not everybody's a teacher. But I feel that if you share with them upfront what their child is going to have to have by kindergarten, and then you give them tools, we would have to provide them some things and some resources and educate them how to use the resources, whether they be things on the computer or actually make it literacy-rich, where we give away free books. So many times, the libraries have books that are never pulled off the shelves that we could be giving to kids at the preschool level and introducing them to sounds and giving opportunities for parents to come into school and read with their kids and get them involved, then I feel like you'll see a big difference.
Now you're making more sense.
A lot of it, a lot of it is just parents are fearful of school. You know, they say, "Why do I go to school to be a teacher? I'm not a preschool teacher. I don't have the patience to sit down." But a lot of times, if you give them the right tools and show them how to do it, then that fear goes away and they're more apt to try.
That's what I want to hear. I want to hear more how we're going to achieve our goals instead of just saying, "I'm going to give a list." A list doesn't mean anything to a lot of people. Actually, not to be, a visual person has to be shown in advance, and I think that's sort of getting a step up on things.
And a lot of the elementary schools are already having like literacy night and math night, and usually a lot of them have an older sibling, and that's a great way to show them a skill on those nights so they can go and apply with the other one. They'll try.
You can even tie it to social media, you can tie it to our district website where they can have, you know, links and they can have information that's out there that says, "Hey, you know, these are things that we would like to see, you know, in order for our kids to be kindergarten ready, you know, follow these, and you know, here's some tools, and here's the resources."
The library is a great store.
And then, yeah, but I mean, even through our own district website, I mean, and not only that, but that also encourages, you know, the parents to, you know, send their kids to the county, you know, school system, you know, if we have those tools out there for them. And then, I mean, it starts from day one, day one.
And Ms. Williams, I mean, when you also say that a lot of times, parents, whether it's their first child or whether it's second or third, they may not know what are those expectations whenever that, of what that child should be able to do whenever they enter kindergarten. So even just being able to have that conversation with parents in the community or even childcare services within the community of saying, "Here's what they need to be able to do at a minimum whenever they come into kindergarten," can really set a solid foundation where those numbers can start to go up.
And you know I'm new to Barstown area, but the library would be a great place. You all have a wonderful library here, and I have not worked with the director yet, but I know it would be a great opportunity to offer early learning programs throughout the summer, even if it was just like a little week-long camp to talk about these and to educate the media specialists there of what skills. Because even though they work at a public library, they may not know what is actually asked on the screener, what they need to have to start kindergarten. So we could do some education there as well.
We're lucky in this community that not only do we have a nice central library, but both Bloomfield and New Haven have nice, relatively new library branches, and I know during the summer that they do offer different programs. So like I said, being able to partner up and help support that, allow them to help support us, that's a win-win for both of us.
It's called the center?
Yeah, it's right.
Yeah, if you read, I don't watch commercial-wise, but my mother tells me quite often about the opportunities at Bloomfield for all ages, not just, you know, not just the older Americans, but there's pretty young ones there too that go, and some, all year long. She's fascinated with all the programs that they offer for all ages. And, yeah, I just wanted to hear how we, we're going to go about this. Others are just saying that's what we're going to do. I just wanted to know, I want to make people aware that this is what we're going to do. Thank you, I like it.
Mr. Christian Norman?
Are we getting the word out that, you know, we want these children with some disabilities and things, make sure they are getting into preschool? What are we doing for that?
Well, I think the preschool program did a great job of advertising the program and what they had to offer and that kind of thing. But as far as the actual skills, I know they're listed, they're on various websites, and if parents really want to look into it, they can find the listed skills, but I think we have to do a better job.
Right, I'm just wondering if we're advertising enough to make sure that we, it's, we want your children.
So one of the things that you'll notice down the hall is a sign that encourages people to get enrolled in the Early Learning Center. So one of the things that Ms. Walker has done is put those together, and they've got, they're going out to places around the community to be sure that they get those posted in a variety of places, businesses and doctor's offices and things like that. One of the things I want to be sure that we mentioned that was listed, and we talked about a good deal over the last couple of years, is the Bourne Learning Academies that we have. Boston has had a Bourne Learning Academy for several years, and we've added them in, you're going to have to help me.
Bloomfield, Foster Heights.
Foster Heights, we added this year. And those are programs that bring the family in, working with the frisky coordinators in the evenings, and they teach kids, teach families how to teach kids a lot of the things that the Brigance is going to pick up. And I've heard them talk about sorting the laundry based on color, folding the clothes, and helping them understand the special relationships that are involved in that. So those kinds of simple household things that we are all doing around the house, if you've got youngsters that can help, that's a teachable moment, and those moments exist throughout the days, and we know to take advantage of them, and that's something that the Bourne Learning Academies have really focused on. It's pretty cool.
Appreciate your work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Williams, I'm sorry, I said Ms. Walker. I think I said that twice, didn't I? Moving on to item 7B, Grant Update, 7B1, which is the Teaching Art Together KAC for Boston School. Mr. Deegan.
Y'all are familiar with the Teaching Art Together grant program. We've been very successful with that. I've had several. They bring a lot of great artists into the schools. This is an application from Boston School. They want to bring in a theater artist to do residency, a one-week residency, and it's primarily, this particular program is primarily geared toward supporting their anti-bullying program. And this is for the spring semester that's coming up. I think Ms. Cole is here that might be able to add more to this about the Teaching Art Together grant, in case the board has any questions.
Just another question.
The, I noticed that usually one of the questions we ask is there any required match? This one has a $400 required match. Is that a request to the board for that, or is that something that the school itself is going to be managing?
It comes to the board.
Okay. I'll make a motion. Motion by Mr. Page, second by Mr. Norman, all in favor. Aye, opposed, motion passes. 7B2, the Dupont Pioneer Grant for Nelson County High School Agriculture Department.
The, both agriculture programs in both high schools are pretty invested in the case program, and Dupont Pioneer is one of the companies that supports an awful lot of case programs. And so this particular application is geared directly towards that, getting, to support that curriculum with money to purchase more resources, the expendables that go within some of the equipment. So it's, it's just, it's something supporting some curriculum that we already have in place.
Motion by Ms. Berry. Second by Mr. Penny, all in favor. Aye, opposed, motion passes. 7B3, the KAEE College School Grant for Cox's Creek.
KAEE is Kentucky Association of Environmental Education, and this is a, the first rendition, I guess, of what is envisioned as a larger program. But what they want to do is, in a nutshell, utilize the outdoor classroom a lot more than it presently is. There's already some things that are in place there, such as flower boxes and things like that, large flower boxes where you can plant corn and beans and things like that around the school. They want to get the kids involved in hands-on activities, helping to basically grow things in the flower boxes and then expand outward from there. So that's the main thing. And one of the other things about this particular application is they are, at the outset, working hard to involve the FFA programs, and so there would be high school students that would go out and work with these kids. Same thing with involving the Nelson County Technology Center with some of this as far as constructing some of the projects and that sort of thing. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of volunteer things that seek involvement, so.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Berry. Second by Mr. Norman, all in favor. Aye, opposed, motion passes. And then last one, 7B4, Horizons Academy Fender Music Foundation.
Fender Music Foundation does not provide brand-new instruments, but they do provide, they collect and refurbish used musical instruments. And this grant program basically takes these repurposed musical instruments and donates them to schools that meet their criteria. And so this is an application from Horizons Academy. They have a nascent music program, but they have a music teacher there, a certified music teacher. And so this would support that and basically build the ground up.
Motion. Motion by Mr. Page. Second by Mr. Norman, all in favor. Aye, opposed, motion passes. Appreciate it, Mr. Deegan. Item number eight, which is Student Stakeholder Engagement, 8A, which is Guest Comments. Any person wishing to address the board may do so by following these rules. Individuals representing themselves are limited to three minutes. Individuals representing a group are limited to five minutes. Please step up to the microphone, state your name and address, and if you represent a group, state the name of the group you are representing. So we need a motion to adjourn the regular session.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Norman, second by Mr. Page, all in favor. Aye, opposed, motion passes. We will need to convene executive session per KRS 61.810-sub1-subF. So need a motion to go into executive session?
Yes, and that's for the purpose of discussing student discipline.
Motion. Motion by Mr. Norman.
Second.
Second by Ms. Berry, all in favor. Aye, opposed, motion passes. Motion passes.